The order. Oh, there's Anna joining us. Okay, Steve, could you do a roll call?
Certainly, Ms. Tabachnik.
Here, I've been here.
I saw you hiding out. Mr. Schulman?
Here.
Ms. Langgallis?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Here.
Okay, you have seven.
Did you, did you call Lou Schulman?
Yep. Yeah, Lou, Lou's here. I.
Okay. The first matter today is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight, ten ninety-four East Avenue. Hello. That's to convert office space into apartments. A report and recommended action. Who is here representing seventy and ninety-four East Avenue?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, thank you and good evening. For the record, my name is Liz Satchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandac in Hennessy. We presented this application to you last month. Since then, and we received comments from BFJ, your design peer review consultant. We have addressed those comments and incorporated not only revisions as a result of those comments, but also revisions as a result of zoning staff into revised plans that were submitted last week. Furthermore, we've received the sign off from Health Department, Fire Department, First District Water Department. And we're awaiting comments from DPW and WPCA, but I don't think those are of any consequence that we can't adjust and address post approval and certainly make that a condition of approval. We received comments yesterday from TMP. We haven't had any opportunity really to review them since we just got them, even though they've had the plans for eight weeks. And we'll take a look at them post approval. But if we ask, we ask you that if you make a TMP's request conditions of approval, and they related to the sidewalk on Smith Street, that we'd be given enough flexibility to interact with TMP and come to something that's acceptable to both them and to the client. At this point, there's really nothing else unless you want us to walk you through the plans and the application again. But generally speaking, ninety-four East Avenue, it's an old structure. There's existing residential units, there's existing office. The proposal is to convert the office into six additional residential units of one, two, and three bedroom, bringing the total number of units on the site to eleven, making the entire site residential. There's sufficient parking on site for all of the residential units. I think that's really about it, unless Ms. Andrususki has some additional comments or questions. There were no comments or suggestions or questions by this commission that I'm aware of that we didn't answer last month. So I'd ask that you would move this matter forward to action.
We do have Susan Goldberg from BFJ, who did the peer review, which was required for this application. So if she wanted to say a couple of things on her review and those results and how they responded, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you all. So BFJ submitted an initial memo, which was mentioned previously on April twenty-fourth. The comments related to the clarification of drawings, the location of egress patio staircases, and the configuration and amenities provided within the recreation space. We received revised drawings by the applicant on May fourteenth. And we issued a revised memo based on the new drawings on May sixteenth. We believe that all comments were positively addressed. We see significant improvements in the site design, the drawing clarifications, the addition of a patio staircase, and the enhanced amenities on the lower street patio. So we recommend approval and are pleased with the revisions.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Michelle, do you?
I don't have anything further on staffs, and I thought all concerns and comments were addressed so far.
Okay, good. Why don't we do an emotion for, to approve, and then we'll look at the conditions of approval? If everybody's agreed.
I'll make the most of my chair.
Okay, Tammy moves. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, Lou, seconds. And Commissioner Williams has just joined us. I see. Do we want to bring up the, Michelle, do you want to bring up the conditions?
Can you see that?
Yeah, Michelle, can you make it a little larger?
Yes. That's that.
Perfect.
So you'll see the highlighted is just a little tweaked, just considering the specific, sorry, geez. From the comments from DMB. Just, just consider that for the applicants. We adjusted that. That's all that really changed from when this memo went out to you guys.
Okay. Does anybody have any comment? Are we ready to go forward and to vote on this matter? If there's no comments, Steve, can you do a roll call? Or Michelle, can you do a roll call?
Sure, I can. Ms. Tabachnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn, Mrs. Lankowski?
Um, Galen, can I vote?
That's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say we should seat Anna as well before we.
All right, Steve, what did you say?
I should have Anna and Diana seated for the evening, assuming.
Okay, well, see, both of you are seated.
Okay, thank you. I vote yes.
Um, Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
And Mr., did we get you, Mr. Williams? They kind of shuffled around there. Okay, is that everybody that was seated?
No, you didn't get me. Yes.
Ms. Wells, of course. Apologies, a little scrambled there. All right, that passes.
Thank you, everyone, for your help on this.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our next matter. Uh, this is Thomas J. Telesco. One fifty-one Main Street. It's an extension of time request for proposed new building. For motor vehicle repair use. Report recommended action. Who is here representing Mr. Telesco?
I am. Tom Stasi. I'm his broker, and I've been handling the project.
Okay, please proceed.
Um. Uh, Mr. Telesco decided to sell the building. We have been in negotiations with somebody that's interested. But they're looking at alternative uses, but they want the um, the approval to stay throughout their due diligence period and their the time we've given them, which is not until the end of June. Unfortunately, the expiration was May twelfth. Um, so I had asked for a meeting to see if we could get it extended. Um, so I've had to put the contract on hold um, until I can get a answer. So I'm asking for um, whatever extension I can get. A year would be nice.
Hey, does anybody have any questions? For Mr. Stasi? There are no questions?
I would move reapproval on your extension.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mrs. Chapin.
Okay. Uh, we should do a roll call for this? Whose matter is this? Is this? Michelle, or is this?
I'll, I'll.
Steve?
Sure. Um, Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Tabachnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
Unanimous.
Okay, we'll move on to our next matter.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
My next matter is PMC Properties Limited LLC, five ninety-nine West Avenue and five Merwin Street. It's an extension of time. For change in ownership for a motor vehicle license. Change of motor vehicle license. Uh.
Can I say something about this before, before we ask for further comment?
Yes, certainly.
Only because I think I'd like to have a further discussion at the end of the meeting regarding applications like this. Apparently, when this application came in, there was a violation on the property. Um, and I was prepared, if that violation had not been removed, to vote against this tonight. To my understanding, the violation has been removed. Uh, but I think our, and again, I don't think we should discuss this now. Maybe we can discuss it at the end of the meeting. Uh, that when a property comes to us with a violation, we not take any action on it until and unless that violation has been resolved. We don't put it on the agenda. Uh, we have them resolve the violation, and then we deal with it. And with that, again, I don't want to take up our time now. But I would like to hold discussion on this at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Uh, who is representing five ninety-nine West Avenue?
I am Chairman Wells.
Thank you.
So again, good evening. I'm Liz Satchi from Carmody Torrent Sandac in Hennessy, representing PMC Properties. The applicant that appeared before you and received approval on a special permit, excuse me, site plan review and motor vehicle request last year on April seventeenth. And there were various conditions of approval, one of which was my client needed to work with TMP to secure curb cut permits for both Merwin Street and West Avenue. That took some time, and those were just recently granted last month. In addition to that, there were some corporate changes that needed to be undertaken. Those were concluded, which prevented moving forward. And lastly, as Mr. Chairman, Mr. Schulman indicated, there was a violation cited to the property recently. That needed to be addressed before this commission could move forward with respect to issuing, excuse me, the violation notice prevented the client from moving forward with securing a zoning permit. Hence, we had a delay in seeking that permit, and we're running up against the deadline to secure a zoning permit within a year of the approval date. So we're before you for a year request of extension of time. The violation that was noted this, this year was cured. And I believe zoning staff was out at the site today, and I think Mr. Baker can confirm that that violation has been cured. So we're asking that you give us an extension of time so that we can secure now the zoning permit and building permit. If a building permit is necessary. I anticipate that the client will move forward with his zoning permit application process within the next two to three weeks, maybe a month at most. But if you would grant it the year as you typically do, that would be helpful in the event that there's something goes wrong with either the permit issuance plans that we submit or the building permit process.
May I ask a question?
Yes, yes, Anna.
Two questions, I guess. Um, one, what happens if we don't grant an extension in these cases in general?
If you don't grant an extension and the timeframe has either passed or is about to pass, and an applicant can't secure those permits, the underlying approval becomes null and void, and the applicant will have to restart the process all over again from the submission of an application through the public hearing process if a public hearing was required.
Thank you.
Sure.
And can you share what the zoning violation was and how long it was present before it was remedied?
Um, I don't have a lot of information on that. I believe it had to do with some vehicles that were on the site for, that didn't have proper permits to be parked on the site. Um, I think that was the, the gravement of the violation. Uh, but whatever it was, the limited information that I know was cured rather quickly. The violation notice was only issued, I believe, within the past few weeks. It hasn't been pending for a year or so. It was a recent violation.
The violation has been cured now, correct?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And then, are there any other questions? For Attorney Satchi? Do I hear a motion?
Richard, you're muted.
I move to approve.
I second.
Okay. Uh, shall we do it? Let's do a roll call again of it.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tabachnik? Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you all for your time tonight. I hope you have a short meeting, and I hope you all have a pleasant Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, then we'll move on to public hearing. Our first matter is a continuation of a public hearing. It's twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, R slash SP Glazer Group LLC, One River Road. And it's a two-part matter, a proposed zoning regulation text amendment to Article Four regarding the CD dash one L zone and the Silver Mine Tavern district overlay zone to permit specific commercial uses in conjunction with a special permit application for allow for meetings or recreational activities, community gatherings, events, and special events within an existing historic structure. Applicant rebuttal and report and recommended action. So we will proceed with the applicant rebuttal. The public participation portion of this public hearing has been closed.
Madam Chairman, before we start, can I say for the record that I did listen to or watch the YouTube video of your last hearing? And I'm not sure whether attendance was taken, but I was also at the walkabout.
Wonderful. So you will be eligible to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Feinberg, Attorney Feinberg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is Lisa Feinberg. I'm a partner with Carmody Torrent Sandac in Hennessy. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Glazer Group LLC, represented here tonight by Andy Glazer. As we discussed on the seventh, I am prepared to move forward directly with rebuttal unless there are any questions from you all or from staff before I get started. Okay, hearing none. Um, in preparing for tonight, I went back through the letters submitted and reviewed my notes from the public hearing. In the interest of time, I'm not going to address individual comments. Instead, I'm going to attempt to respond by addressing themes. But if you think I've overlooked anything, please, of course, let me know. So let's start with the proposed event space use. Events have always been considered accessory to restaurants and hotels in Norwalk. As I noted and you heard from neighbors, events were regularly held at the Silver Mine Tavern, which could seat up to two hundred people. And there's no question that events may take place at the tavern or the mercantile or the inn. Therefore, this application does not ask permission to have events at Gray Barnes. We're merely confirming that the fifteen hundred square foot barn may also be used when the tavern is hosting an event. The only time the barn is used for an event without the tavern is for a gathering such as yoga or a farmer's market or a community event like the Christmas concert. Events that do not include food and drink. Outside food and drink are not permitted to be served at Gray Barnes. To be clear, we are not increasing capacity. This is an accessory space for the tavern events and a community gathering space. We are only asking to continue operating in the same way that Gray Barnes has operated for years, and in the manner we believe was previously contemplated by this commission and permitted. Noise. We have proposed several conditions to address concerns related to noise. First, all live music in the barn will end no later than eight PM on Sunday through Thursday and ten PM Friday and Saturday. Second, live music at the barn will be limited to inside only. Third, we're going to comply with the noise ordinance. This is the same standard that every other zone with live music is held to, including commercial uses surrounded by residential homes like Weburn Beach Club. Fourth, to ensure compliance with the noise ordinance and remove the opportunity for human error, we've proposed a requirement that we install noise limiting technology in the sound system at the barn. We're also happy to include an outside sound measurement system. It's also worth noting that this application has the support of the vast majority of the adjacent neighbors who would be most impacted by noise, including units one A, one B, and one D in the village, as well as three hundred and three oh two Silver Mine Avenue. Traffic and parking. We are not increasing capacity. Thus, we are not increasing traffic or changing traffic patterns. Gray Barnes received site plan approval in twenty fourteen for all of the buildings on the campus, including the barn. And this site plan approval included valet parking in the lot adjacent to the barn. This is all vested. That approved valet parking plan incorporates up to sixty-five parking spaces. Gray Barnes employs a full-time professional valet service to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to implement this approved valet parking plan. Because we're not increasing capacity, we're also not impacting parking demand. The Transportation Mobility and Parking Department, TMP, has confirmed that they have no concerns with the valet operation. Gray Barnes is also happy to pay for the crosswalk improvements proposed by the department to enhance safety. And Gray Barnes would also be willing to hire a police officer to assist with large tavern events utilizing the barn to ensure compliance with time and noise limitations, as well as parking logistics. Septic. This is not a zoning issue. A code-compliant septic system has been installed and approved by the Norwalk Health Department and State of Connecticut Health Department. Septic is the health department's purview, and the proposed conditions of approval confirm that all requirements of the health department must be satisfied prior to any CO. The same condition applies to the fire marshal and to the building department. Site plan. A question was also raised regarding the need for a site plan application. The application before you is one hundred percent compliant with your regulations. There is an existing site plan approval for the Gray Barnes campus. We are not building any new structures or proposing any changes to this approved site plan. In these circumstances, your regulations confirm a new site plan application is not required. Gray Barnes is universally considered a positive addition to the Silver Mine neighborhood. Even those in opposition confirmed that they support Gray Barnes. Approval of the application before you tonight will not adversely impact the neighborhood. But given the challenges of the restaurant business, the loss of the use of the barn during events, we'll call into question the future of Gray Barnes. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Attorney Feinberg. Uh, is Mr. Glazer, you wanted to speak two weeks ago. Do you have any comment now?
I would just have one last comment, and I appreciate Attorney Feinberg's presentation. I think the commission should understand one thing. The neighbor who was continually had an issue with us has created, has come to you to piggyback on the cluster setup that we did at Gray Barnes in order to save the buildings here. He has a subdivision that he is looking to develop, and he's looking to sell his property. We absolutely appreciate the fact that all the neighbor here around here should enjoy the beauty of this neighborhood and the peace and tranquility of which we are one. And we are committed to that. But I think the commission should be strongly aware of the fact that the motivation, the one individual who has continually harassed us has ulterior motives. And I think that's something that the commission should recognize. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Chairman, Chairman.
Thank you. And does anybody in the commission have any questions? For Attorney Feinberg or for Mr. Glazer? Hearing no questions. Do I have a a motion on the first matter, the proposed zoning regulation text amendment?
Uh, I'll move approval of the text amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, Richard's seconded. Can we pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, give me one second.
Think we should start a little further up, maybe at the top?
That was the actual special permit, so let's start here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Steve, do you mind jumping up to the proposed text amendment? I think there was one thing that staff had flagged about possibly removing the following special permit approval statement, and I'm not sure if folks wanted to discuss that as part of our deliberation here.
Oh, the actual, actual text itself.
Right, because that's, that's the part where we have a motion for right now is the text amendment.
Yeah, hopefully I have it.
Yeah, it's at the page one.
Page one.
Definitely going to need to make that larger.
I figured that was coming.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Does anybody have any comment on the changes in the text amendment?
I'm okay with removing the following special permit approval. If, if I'm reading this text amendment correctly, having that not in here doesn't remove the need for them to have a special permit and, you know, our, our next motion and or vote. Because the use table still has it as a special permit use that we would need to act on. So I, I don't know if staff wants to opine, but I, I read as like this following special permit approval as being duplicative of like the other pieces, but happy to keep it in if it like provides more clarity as to what's required for this barn structure. I don't know how others feel.
No, I don't see it as a problem.
Okay, I agree.
I don't. Are there any other costs, further comments? Steve, shall we take a vote on the text amendment and then move on and take a vote on the special permit application?
Yes.
Okay, so we are now, I, the first motion was for the text amendment. And we have, we've looked at it, we've read it. We've, we have no questions, so I think we're ready to proceed with a vote. Does anybody have any further questions or comment before we proceed with a vote? Okay, so we should probably do a
Oh, and.
I have a question. Very sorry.
Anna?
Um. Steve, the memo says on page four, additional information on this will be submitted by TMP. And the applicant's attorney said that TMP had signed off on this, but I don't see anything from TMP in the meeting materials. Can you clarify? but I don't see anything from TMP in the meeting materials. Can you clarify that?
You're saying on page four of the memo?
Yeah, of the memo you sent out on the fifteenth, I think, or dated the fifteenth.
Trouble hearing you, Anna, can you speak up a little?
Um, I'm sorry, the memo dated the fifteenth, page four, second paragraph from the bottom says additional information on this will be submitted by TMP. And the attorney had said that TMP had approved this, but I don't see any approvals in the meeting materials, so I just wanted to get some clarification on whether we're waiting on additional information or not, and whether they have approved sort of the valet parking plan or not.
Yeah, I think the only outstanding issue related to TMP is the actual where the crosswalk is going to go. I think they, that wasn't quite settled at, at this juncture, but I think that the condition kind of specifies that the applicant needs to work with TMP, and then where they agree to install it, then the applicant's responsible for installing it. I don't think there's anything outstanding related to parking.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, are we ready to go through? I think we're ready to take a vote, Steve.
Okay.
Can you do a roll call?
Certainly. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Batchnick?
No.
Ms. Langellis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes.
Okay, well, we will move on then to the special permit application. Do we want to call it, put that up on the screen and review it?
Sure, do you want to maybe make a motion and I'll scan to that.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Make the motion.
Carrie makes a motion, is there a second?
Second.
You're second? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then and look at the conditions of approval.
Now, I just got to remember where I had that. So then the red text is what I added from the prior memorandum. Just I, it's missing a couple of things that I thought should be included. And the first two, just talk about the site visit that the commission held. So the conditions similar to what you saw last time, so I added a few things in red text based off of comments from the, from the applicant and things that we heard from the commission, just to clarify, but everything in black is what you saw before. I added in a cap on the number of events of forty or more people and put that at thirty per year. So that's just kind of what, that was similar to what was in the initial draft in which for when the application was first coming before you, which was probably close to, you know, almost a year ago. And I sent that out in a supplemental memo, so there, you know, that was concluded as part of the record. As Attorney Feinberg was speaking, I kind of put the one in yellow in there. If you felt that was something you wanted, then I can expand on that. If you thought that they should have a police officer present for event, police officer present for events over, or for forty more people, so I can put that in as a condition. Number eight is new, basically asking, you know, if, great, if we ask for events that were of forty more people, we can, we can request that of Gray Barnes and they have to supply that. And they're kind of, one area which I think might warrant a little discussion revolves around the applicability with the noise ordinance, because I think it was a little bit a little confusing within the sound report that they put together, what's, what's applicable, what's not applicable. So what I, I came up with is table two, note one, which has numbers that were pretty much right on with the sound study that they proposed. And I figured going with condition twelve, that, you know, the, the north door of the barn would, and I think they've already agreed to this, that they would keep that door closed during those events. That way, the, you know, the, the sound's not bouncing as much in that direction.
Steve, one question I have, not regarding the noise, but it's back up between number item two and five. Number two, total occupancy of the tavern and barn shall not exceed ninety-seven. And then number five, the barn shall not be used as additional restaurant seating. Isn't that redundant?
No, I, I, because I think the, the reason for that is that the, the barn, it's really meant to be used, if, if they're going to use it for events, it's used for events. It's not used as part of the restaurant, so they couldn't have it as like an adjunct dining area. And that also raises a bunch of different concerns with the health department in terms of food service, so that, that's kind of why that's there.
So if somebody wanted to have, say, a bridal shower in the barn for twenty people, would that be allowed?
So they'd, they'd be allowed to do, they wouldn't be allowed to do the meal in there. So they could have like orders and drinks and those kind of things, but if they're going to have a, a, a meal, that would have to take place in the tavern.
Did the applicant agree to that?
I, I don't think they had a choice, because that's what the health department said you could do.
I see. Thank you for the clarification.
Um, did you want to talk about number seven while we're here, and then we could go down? And then, or if you have questions about number six?
For number six, is the enforcement of that handled by item eight?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. So we would, you know, we would need some kind of verification that, okay, well, he gave, we, we, we got a list of thirty events at that calendar year from the applicant. And then we have verified reports that there was thirty-four events, and that, that technically would be a violation of, of that permit. And that, you know, that, keep in mind too, that down the road, the applicant has the ability to come back and request a modification of that number. Not, you don't have to grant it, but they do have the ability to come in and ask that question.
Or number seven, I appreciate the applicant had put that forward as a idea. I think it's a good way to help address concerns that, that neighbors have, because we, we've heard mixed reviews from, from neighbors of either absolutely no issue or significant issue. So having an officer present, ideally one who can take sound measurements and or have them install that outdoor sound measurement device, so that way compliance with the noise ordinance and these conditions is clear and easy to handle immediately, that there doesn't need to be an officer showing up and saying, oh, well, I don't have the equipment and yeah, just have another report. So I'm, I'm good with having that in there, and similar to what you just said before, like, if moving forward, events don't cause an issue, they could come in front of us and say, hey, we've had successful events. We'd like to remove this condition, you know, it's something that they could come and ask us for.
Would that be more of an evening thing than a day thing? What if there were forty people doing yoga?
Sure, yeah. I'm good with that being an evening thing, I, yeah.
Or evening events?
Yes.
Do we need to specify when evening starts, or is it okay to leave it as evening?
Leave it as evening.
You just leave it an evening.
Okay, good.
Okay, are there any other questions or concerns?
Uh, what's under the, uh, thank you.
Yeah, jump the page.
I just want to say that I'm not comfortable approving this application. I appreciate.
Can, Anna, we can't hear you.
It's okay.
Hear me.
Now we can hear you.
I, I just want to say that I'm not comfortable approving this application. I think the additional requirements are very good, possibly as good as they can be. But that, at the end of the day, a property was purchased with plenty of parking for the events that, as we're told, have always occurred, up to two hundred people. The parking was intentionally removed, and then for X number of years, events were held without permits. And the, I think the balance of the evidence that we heard was that these events have caused problems in the neighborhood. I, I didn't do a tally, so I don't know, you know, how many are in favor against, but, but it did sound like, and from the pictures we saw, that events with this amount of parking, even with the valet plan have not been working. And I don't, I don't trust that the owner will be complying with this, or that if the owner does not, that Norwalk's enforcement will be able to enforce it. I understand that an annual permit does not make sense. It is not something that anybody's going to do, and I wouldn't suggest it, but I understand why some of the neighbors wanted that. And I, for, for those reasons, I'm going to vote no.
Any other comments?
I can only speak for myself, but I appreciate Anna's comments. I mean, too often, people will vote either for or against without giving their reasons. I appreciate that Anna has articulated the reasons for her vote.
Yes, I totally agree, absolutely. I think we should understand why people are voting no if they're voting no. Are we ready here to proceed with the vote?
I just had one quick question of what happened with the outside sound measuring device? I, I know we were talking about it, but I didn't see what happened to it.
I can pull it back up, but it's included. Let me just scan up there for you.
Have to reshare, Steve.
Yeah, I figured I would not reshare.
All right, as long as it's, as long as it's in there, that's, that's all I want to know.
Yeah.
I did wonder, I guess it's a little too late to ask this, if it had a recording device in it that keeps a record of what happened. But like I said, it doesn't matter.
That I don't know if it does record or not. I just want to make sure, yeah, Brian asked me about the effective date just before we vote. I'm going to just double check on the other one.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that too, Richard, if it had a recording feature, maybe with an officer being there. If it doesn't have a recording feature, they can at least look at that to see.
Could always look at it, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be interested if, I guess maybe the audience committee would be interested in having such devices at places that do have music generally. As far as with apartments above them, for example, you know, maybe it makes sense to have a, a noise meter there, but that's a separate discussion and not for now.
I think that's probably the, the reason why the police department have the meters, so if they can go out at, you know, when, when, when a complaint occurs, they can go out and get their, their measurement. Because I, I know that with those specific instruments, there's significant calibration involved with them, so I don't know if, if the if there's a, if those units are not calibrated the same as the, the city's units, then I don't know if that data would even collate. You know, if, if you'd be able to, you know, say, oh, it's in violation based on the, the recording level of that particular instrument.
And we know that with noise complaints, the officer that's sent out doesn't necessarily have that measuring device with them much of the time. We saw that in the reports about this property. And for those of you who enjoy watching zoning citation hearings, we see it there as well.
Yeah, but here there is a device.
Will the police officer on duty have that device with him or her?
I would have to check. My guess is that that particular officer is off duty technically. So I don't know if they would have the ability to have that. I think that, that's kind of like with their on traffic duty. It's, it's extra, extra duty, you know, versus, you know, somebody that's on a shift.
And they have to be specially trained, right? It's not like anybody can just check out the noise stick.
Yeah, there, there is specific training. I, I don't know if every officer is trained on that or only specific ones per shift, that, that I'd have to clarify with the chief.
But that officer could call someone who had a calibrated meter in the event he thought it was too loud?
I, I don't see why not. Yeah, I don't, I don't see why they couldn't. I, I think, you know, you, you, hopefully that, you know, if the complaint is specific to noise, that, you know, say there's a call to the police department, then that, that would properly trained officer with the equipment would be dispatched to, to address that concern.
Yeah, I think one good safeguard is the, are the, the time constraints. You know, if it's not after eight o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, and not after, what was it, ten o'clock on this Friday and Saturday?
Yep.
That's a pretty good protection.
In addition to the compressors that will limit the speakers as well.
Okay, anything further? Are we ready to go to a vote here?
Yeah, I think you just need to have somebody, I don't know if you actually had a motion, so that was the only.
I think I made the notion.
I think so, yeah, I think, I think.
Everybody seconded.
I seconded.
Thank you, Lou, sorry.
Okay, now let's do the, the roll call vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Batchnick?
No.
Mr. Rowena?
I'm sorry, yes. For all of, all of the reasons in the wherethes that started the, the what we're voting on. And I also wanted to say that while I appreciate Mr. Glazer's angst over his next door neighbor, his closing statement had no bearing on my vote. So I vote yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Langellis?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Hey, well, thank you very much. Then we will move on to our next public hearing. The next matter is twenty twenty-five dash thirty S P, Dominic Franco, nine Fulmer Lane. Pardon me? Nine Fulmer Lane, special permit for after the fact sole disturbance and clear cutting, extending ten thousand, excuse, oh, excuse me, exceeding ten thousand square feet in area. Public hearing report and recommended action. Who is here representing Dominic Franco? Is it Dominic Franco?
Well, I'm here.
We're here.
Okay, thank you. What are you, please proceed?
Well, we're the people.
We're the owners of nine Fulmer, I think.
I think Brian's on there somewhere.
So, so Dominic, do you just want to go over kind of how, why you applied for the special permit, kind of just like the, the work that occurred? And then, and then go over that, your, your landscaping plan?
Okay, so we bought the home and I had, I cleared the, the left side of the house. It was a wooded area. Lot of trees were dying and it hasn't been touched in over sixty years. So I went ahead and cleared it, not knowing you needed a special permit for over ten thousand square feet. And so we got a notice and saying we needed it, so this is how we we came to this point. But it was just to landscape the property, re- re-landscape it and plant new lawn and new trees to block the Merritt Parkway. They needed some light to get in for those to grow. Um, um, I'm playing lawn area there. It's, it's, it's not to store anything, um. Uh, we're not building anything, so, uh, it's just wanted to be re-landscaped. And, and, and it kinda, I could see why people complained because it almost looked like I was planning to build another home or something. And no one knew what I was doing. Um, but, um, it, it's just to re-landscape the property and beautify the neighborhood, um, and, and, and all my neighbors seem to like it and they can't wait to see how it comes out, but I'm getting held up from somebody. And, uh, and the special permit, I didn't know, we apologize for that, and, and, and if I knew, I would have stopped at nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Um, but, uh, we didn't, so, you know, I, I just have to re-landscape a little more. And I presented a plan to you and, uh, I'm gonna plant more shrubs along the property line, um, which we already planted some trees, but that, that was before the fact we knew, we, we, um, we got this, um, the notice. So some of it's done, but we had to stop, so job got held up and it's been, it's been a while, but you know, it was over the winter months, this, this, we're waiting for this hearing, this final hearing here. And, uh, you know, there's a window of opportunity to landscape. You only have so much time for survival reasons and, and availability reasons on, on shrubbery and stuff. So now's the time. I have the whole summer and the end of the fall there to, to do this. It's just, I don't, I don't know where to go from here. I'm waiting on the commission. So, uh, that's kinda, that's all we're doing. We're just re-landscaping and beautifying it, nothing out of the extraordinary. All the trees are still there that were in the woods. I only clear cut it, uh, underbrush and all the trees that were dead and falling down, which were a danger anyway, cuz it could have fell on top of someone. So, and yeah, it looks totally different, but it's, I am re-landscaping, so it's gonna look that much better now. Um, especially for a neighborhood. It's gonna look like a park, really. You know, without the swing sets and benches and stuff, but it's gonna look like a park. So i- 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 it goes with the rest of my property, just the flow. So that's, that's, uh, where I'm at.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, I understand that the special permit request is about the landscaping and that one of the violations was for the clear cutting greater than ten thousand feet, but there were also violations of unpermitted storage of commercial vehicles, building materials, um, and I think operating a storage yard maybe or something like that. Can, can you speak to what was going on and how it has been remedied or not?
So that was during the clear cutting. My machines were there. So does it look like I was storing them? No, it was during the, should I say the construction? It's not construction. During the clear cutting, I needed my equipment there. Um, I, I have a landscape company myself and I store everything in Stanford. I have a yard somewhere else. And it kinda looked like I was storing them, but it's a kind of a big project, what I was doing there, so. Um, like I said, it's more than ten thousand square feet. It's landscaping involved and then, uh, and yes, those were removed right away. I mean, once I had to stop the, the, the job, should I say, um, I brought them all back to my shop in Stanford and, uh, any storing of materials is probably a pile of topsoil or something.
I believe they clarified, well, Brian, and you can verify this, I think, I don't know, but they clarified all this in the, the last four meetings that we were in. We had explained all this and they.
About the storage.
Yeah.
But there's nothing stored there, just my, actually now there's nothing. And right after the notice, we took them out, cuz I couldn't use them and I could, I had to stop.
Questions for Mr. Franco or Mrs. Franco?
Do we have any questions?
Are there any other questions? If there are no questions, we'll go to the public participation, uh, portion of this public hearing. And I'll give you a brief, uh, uh, synopsis of how we run these meetings. If you want to participate, uh, from the public, you raise your hand and we bring you forward into the meeting, or you, uh, can participate via your phone. You only get one chance to speak, so say everything that you intend to say. We give you no time limit, but it really doesn't serve your case to go on longer than necessary or to repeat what somebody else has, has said, um. Uh, let's see. I think that's, I think that's pretty much it. So is there anybody who would like to participate in this public hearing?
If there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak, you can use the raise your hand tool. It's at the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once. If you're dialing on a phone, you'd hit star nine. Seeing none, Ms. Wells?
Okay. Uh, we will, uh, close the public participation section of this public hearing. And this section is left for rebuttal. There's nothing to rebut since there was no public participation. So we'll close the public hearing and we will go on to, uh, either make a motion to approve or deny. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Mrs. Chapin, all second.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, do we have a resolution? Does anyone have any suggestions for additions to the resolution? Okay, I think we are ready to take a vote. Can you do a roll call, Steve?
Start with, let's see here.
Oh, Brian, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
All right, that is unanimous. And I'll just note that Tammy left, so.
Okay, we will go on to, uh, the next matter, which is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven S P, Pepperidge Farms Incorporated, five ninety-five Westport Avenue, is to convert office manufacturing to a self-storage facility. There's a public hearing report and recommended action. Who is representing a Pepperidge Farm?
Uh, Madam Chairman, it's just to let the Francos know, you, you, if you, you're welcome to stay if you want, but you were approved, so you can, you can go have dinner or whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Madam Chairman, uh, I, I have to, um, go. My head feels like it weighs about two hundred and fifty pounds, so.
Well, have a good evening and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Till now.
JJ has joined the meeting, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you.
Are we good?
Yep, we're good.
Great. All right, uh, again, Adam Blank for the attorney for the applicant, um, which is technically Hardcorp. They're the contract purchaser of five ninety-five Westport Avenue. I may sort of interchangeably refer to them as TVG Partners, which is a sort of a related or parent entity to Hardcorp. Uh, also, uh, with me from my law firm is Julie Ludwig, uh, an attorney helping on the project. I'll give you a quick overview, uh, and cover a few housekeeping items, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the rest of the team. Uh, uh, so we've got on, from Clarus Build, Clarus Design Build, the project architects, some combination of either Mike Kozlowski or John Koalski, uh, will, uh, talk about the architecture. From Civil One, the civil engineer is Chris Powalowski. Um, and for traffic engineer is Brian Dempsey, and I think for tonight only, we should call him Brian Demsky, so that he fits in with everybody else. Um, but then, um, and then Chris Kokadess, who's, uh, on screen, he's, uh, the representative from the, uh, client, and he won't present, but he can answer, uh, questions you may have for the, the owner. Um, with that, let me share my screen. So I've got an aerial up of the site, uh, five ninety-five Westport Avenue. Uh, that's, um, you, obviously, we, we did a quick presentation once before to you, but, uh, refresher, this is the, uh, Pepperidge Farm building, uh, here. Technically, there's an apartment complex that's next door. This is actually one parcel of land. It has been created a condominium, so there's an owner of the apartment portion of the property and a separate owner of the self, what was proposed to be self-storage is now the Pepperidge Farm building. We have, we are not gonna buy this property and we don't own it, but it is technically one parcel and we're dealing with, with this portion of it here. Um, so that's unit two. Co- collectively, it's over thirteen acres. Each, each piece is, is a roughly six and a half, uh, acres for unit one and unit two. We're zoned in the C D three C zone, the general urban corridor, community district. Um, we have received sign-offs from, uh, DPW, T M P, Health, Fire and Building. The only department that we haven't gotten a sign-off from is W P C A. Um, and, uh, we don't expect any issues. The, um, obviously, we're already connected to the sewer system and have water at the site. And going, this change of use is gonna be significantly less intense in terms of water usage and sewer. So we don't expect any issues from W P C A. We just haven't gotten their sign-off yet. Um, we've submitted into the record the notices that went out to the neighbors with a filing of the application as well as in advance of the hearing. We've also posted quite a number of signs around the property at each of the streets that it abuts and have submitted those photos to your staff as part of the record. The, um, existing, uh, site, here's a picture from looking at the building from Westport Avenue. This is the front portion of the, of the existing building. Um, we're not making any changes to this and we're not proposing a change of use for this. It remains, uh, uh, as is. Uh, that's, it's the front roughly twenty-five thousand square feet of the building. Um, and then the, as we look, this again is that front portion of the building. And once the building kind of cuts in here, um, and you look down the, the long length of the side, about eighty-five thousand square feet, this is the portion that gets converted to self-storage. It's not being demolished. Um, it's just predominantly an interior fit-up with some, some modest, uh, changes on the exterior. Uh, but it's really just an interior fit-up and change of use to make it self-storage. Um, the, uh, owners of the site, uh, did this another, here's a view looking back up towards Westport Avenue. The owners, um, recently did the secure self-storage building. There's a couple of views of that, which I think came out very nice on, uh, Willard, which is just, literally just down the street from here. They also previously constructed a self-storage facility down on Connecticut Avenue, um, among many others, uh, outside of Norwalk. Um, although this is a, uh, a special permit application, um, it's re, again, it's really just, uh, interior, uh, fit-up and change of, uh, change of use. The, um, the proposed use is significantly less intense than what has historically been at the site, that, that, the prior sort of innovation center use. Um, you'll hear there's a, a de- decrease in traffic, a significant decrease in the both needed and required parking. Um, the self-storage will have minimal onsite employees. The traffic generated by it is limited to, you know, occasional customers moving, um, uh, items in and out of storage. Under your regulations, a total of just under a hundred parking spaces is required for the twenty-five thousand square feet of the front of the building, staying as is, plus the self-storage. The site has, uh, actually just over four hundred parking spaces. So you could say we're amply, uh, parked at present, um, has handicap spaces, loading spaces, bicycle spaces. Um, we'll, we'll make some improvements to the walkways and access, uh, to the building as part of the application. That's the sort of thirty thousand feet, um, and we'll try to be brief with our presentations, but at this point, I'd like to turn it over to our engineer, Chris, uh, Palowski. Absent questions for me at this point?
Meeting everyone and thank you, Adam. Uh, I'm trying to turn my video here, but it says the host has it turned off. Would it be possible to turn my video on? Perfect. Thank you. And would it also be possible to share my screen?
Yeah, you should be able to, Chris.
Perfect, thank you. All right, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
So for the, perfect. For the record, my name is Chris Palowski. I'm a licensed civil engineer in the state of Connecticut with Civil One. Here, I'm gonna have the applicant talk about five ninety-five Westport Avenue. Um, as Adam already mentioned, from a site civil standpoint, this is a fairly straightforward project. Uh, it's in mostly from site civil standpoint, it's mostly interior work that's gonna be going on, which John will talk about in just a few minutes. Um, in terms of the site civil items, the only items that we're really adding, I'm gonna zoom in here so that everybody can see them. I highlighted them in orange on the site plan that's before you. Just give my computer one second to catch up here. So if you're looking at my screen here, um, the first changes or rounded changes that we're doing to the site exterior of the building are adding three walkways for new points of egress for the building. So one will be to the rear of the building here, and that consists of a short concrete sidewalk. Uh, there will be one on the, uh, western side of the building here for, again, for means of egress, a short concrete sidewalk. And then a final or third, uh, additional, uh, means of egress or a sidewalk located on the eastern, uh, portion of the building. In addition to that, we're gonna be striping two dedicated loading zones. So these already exist as loading areas, uh, on the parcel. Uh, we're just gonna be striping them and, and making it very clear where the loading zones will be. So the first will be here. It's gonna be approximately twenty-five by fifty feet in length, meeting the, uh, city of Norwalk zoning regulations and requirements. And then this one over here is twenty-nine by, uh, twenty-five in length approximately. So again, just striping those two loading zones and adding the three, uh, additional egress points in the sidewalks. Uh, on top of that, there's a currently, um, like a patio that existed for the, the stone patio that existed for the previous use. Uh, that's gonna be removed and changed into a landscape slash lawn area. Uh, that helps offset our increase, uh, from the three impervious area, from the three other areas. So as a whole, we'll be decreasing the impervious area on the project. Uh, Adam already talked about the parking, um, the demand or the requirements for self-storage are significantly less than is currently, uh, occupied by the use, so we're, uh, providing more than ample parking. Um, in terms of bicycle parking, it's another regulation, uh, there's existing bicycle parking in the front of the building located approximately here on the screen. That's going to remain. That provides, uh, more than the required minimum spaces for this, uh, project. Um, Adam already mentioned eighty-five thousand roughly square, thousand square feet of self-storage. Uh, it's more than two hundred and fifty feet from the center line of the roadway, which is a requirement of the special permit, uh, to be obtained for this project. So approximately right here is the two hundred and fifty foot line, and just a few feet beyond that begins the, uh, self-storage use of the building. Other than that, um, any and all proposed, uh, site lighting will be dark sky LED compliant. Um, we're not gonna be making any other major site changes, the entrances, the sidewalks, all the existing landscaping, uh, throughout the site and in the rear are going to remain, uh, unchanged. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to either John or Brian, if they'd like to speak on the traffic and architecture, or I'd be happy. With that, I'd like to turn it over to either John or Brian, if they'd like to speak on the traffic and architecture, or I'd be happy to answer. Any questions the commission may have, or we can wait until the end, whatever is easier.
Maybe, Chris, let's get John and Mike, John or Mike, to do that with the architecture, and we'll let Brian close up.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Kowalski. I'm with Claris Design Build. I'm one of the senior architects. Let me share my screen for you. So come up.
Yep.
Okay, so let me go back to the floor plans. So what we're planning on doing, as has been mentioned before. The front area is going to stay as is, which is offices, the rear of the building. Is going to be changed to self-storage. We're assuming between five hundred and fifty and six hundred units amongst all the floors. Working on layouts now. As Chris mentioned, we're doing our best to keep the existing loading docks trying to lessen the impact site wise. Let me switch to the next floor for you, and I can zoom in or out whichever you need. So again, you'll see. Large amounts of storage. Best we can plan out, keeping all existing exits. Stairwells. So basically, the the interior will be sort of completely gutted, and then these will be added. And then exterior wise. Planning on doing some color changes, we're going to be covering up some of the windows. So that you won't see some of the storage areas, also the main entrance. We're we're doing some changes, adding some wood accents. And again, with the curved area. Again, wood accents, doing our best to keep any sort of offices and possible. Viewing of of units in these areas, and then we're going to try to. Cover up as much of the windows as we can to, so that you don't see people's storage in the windows. Sort of simple, easy, but I I believe that should explain it. So we could probably move on to traffic.
Thanks, John. Brian?
Thanks, Adam. Good evening, Brian Dempsey from the firm DTS Providence Design Engineering. Most of my spot has been spoken about already, but just to repeat, we prepared a. Traffic and parking study that's been reviewed and approved by T M P. We show have fifty-four less cars during the peak AM hour. And then forty-four less cars traveling by in the in the peak PM hour. And we'd have a reduction of about seventy parking spaces. That would not be occupied that are currently would be occupied with the manufacturing facility. The mini warehouse or self-storage would only require about nine to ten parking spaces during its peak time. And in terms of what we showed on table one, Julie, thanks for putting this. We'd have only about five vehicles coming in in the peak hour, three coming out. In the afternoon peak hour, you'd have about six vehicles coming in, seven coming out, and the line above showed what the. Previous use would have would have had, so as again, we're fifty-four total less vehicles. In the AM and forty-four less in the PM. And that kind of sums up the traffic.
And and by the way, just so there's for clarity, the the parking numbers that Brian showed you were what? The I T E that like the traffic folks predict the parking needs will be. And that's which is slightly different than what Norwalk's parking requirements are. For these uses, but under both scenarios, this is significantly less than what is required and what used to be required. So if if there's not questions for Brian, I'll just give you a quick sum up and be done. The so your regulation requires a parcel with seven plus acres. Set to fifty-two hundred and fifty feet from the center line of Westport Avenue. And the self-storage portion can be no larger than a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. As we've mentioned, the property is just over thirteen acres. The self-storage facility will be set back more than two hundred and fifty feet from Westport Avenue. And the portion of the building that will be converted to self-storage is just just a touch on above eighty-five thousand square feet, therefore, all of the limitations on the yourself. Storage use are met with respect to the special permit criteria. As this use is a far less intense use of the property from the existing use with less impact on traffic and neighboring properties, those special. Permit criteria are either inapplicable or easily met by this application. And that that's, you know, other than saving some time for rebuttal and answering any questions you have, I think that's it for our formal presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions right now?
Yeah, one question, as I was reviewing the materials, I saw that there was no plan for signage, is any signage planned for this building?
There there will be some signage, but nothing's been submitted as of yet for signage plan.
Okay, I think the fault might be for staff, is that something that will come back before us as part of the review? Of that signage, or is that something staff will handle over the over the counter?
Yeah, the the signage would be an over the counter permit, assuming it will meet the the requirements within the the typical. Signage requirements.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we'll we'll move forward to the public participation. Again, I want to caution everybody that you get to speak once. So you all must say everything that you intend to say and you want opportunity to speak. You won't have another opportunity to speak, but it does not really help much to repeat what we said before. Or to. Repeat what you have submitted, if anything, in writing. You must give us your name and address when you begin to speak. Who's going to be handling this? Is Brian, are you going to be?
I can miss Wells, which whoever, we're all here.
Go for it, Michelle, you got it.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle.
Sure, and I just want to also just make a quick note, I know. A handful of residents and folks had reached out via phone just due to the signage on site, and as Attorney Blank had mentioned. This has nothing to do with the condos, there's no changes over there. I know there is various signs kind of placed. About just because of the property being so large and reaching many roads, so I just wanted to make that statement if that question came up. During the public comment, but if you're interested and I already see some hands, raise your hand. And if you're dialed in on a phone, press star nine, and we'll bring you over. Diana, Diane Lauricella?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission and Staff and Applicant. For the record, my name is Diane Lauricella, twenty-one Little Fox Lane. I first wanted to say that for the site improvements, especially the dark sky compliant. Mentioning is excellent, it's very important for a lot of reasons, wildlife as well as the residents that are nearby. But what I wanted to say is that. I I feel that I am against the change of use. Of course, that is something that I looked at the P O C D. And that we are supposed to try to retain jobs and retain our industrial base as well, even if it's R and D, research and development. While I'm very pleased about the reduction in traffic. And other things that Mr. Attorney Blank mentioned. There is also going to be a drastic reduction in jobs and tax revenue to the city. So my question is, because this is. Is did anyone from the city government, from the Economic and Community Development Department or Bureau, the re. The redevelopment agency or the mayor's office offer to the. This new purchaser, I don't know if they've actually purchased the land yet, or if it's a contract if they get their permit. Or the or the previous owner, anyone offer any ideas for continuing the use? In industrial research and development, if not manufacturing. Prior to this being decided to become a self-storage group. I know there's demand for self-storage, but there's also demand for jobs, scientific jobs. Innovation jobs and tax revenue. Thank you very much for listening. Oh, lastly, I wanted to ask, will there be any solar panels? Used on this building now that if it is approved as a self-storage facility. Thank you very much.
Stacy, just pulled you over, you just have to unmute.
Okay, there I am, Stacy Moketoff, five ninety-seven Westport Avenue. So I am a resident of the rentals, these are not condominiums, just for the record. And I've lived here over eight years, and there was very little traffic from Pepperidge Farm. I'm a little confused about the usage, I keep hearing self-storage. But did I not hear also office space? I I that's a question, because if it's office space and people are going to be working there, there will be a lot of traffic. And those of us who live here who have dogs and we walk on the property. Are concerned about that as we have a shared driveway. If that's probably not the technical term, but you know what I'm speaking of. So those are my questions, and I don't know who would be able to answer that.
The applicant or staff will rebuttal once we get everybody's thoughts in, but thanks for your comments.
Okay.
Anybody else that would like to participate on this item, please raise your hand or press star nine, and we'll bring you over.
Hello?
Yes, Z C, just state your name and address for the record.
Z V Cole Ford Ascoms Lane, Norwalk, Connecticut. Yes, I had a couple of questions, so as you are asking to transform the backend of the property. Into self-storage, but maintain office space in the front of the property, I believe that as Pepperidge Farm used the space. All of the employees parked in the back of the lot where the four hundred spaces are. And then they would come through the back of the building into the front, so if you're going to. That are still going to be in the office space, given that you rent that out to office space, how will they make their way? To to the office space, is that being thought of in terms of your sidewalks and passages? Also, in terms of the property Stacy just mentioned, there's, you know, a lot of people of all. That utilize the apartment complex. Mother lives there and. Are, you know, people walking dogs and so forth, so given that these people may be coming and going and maybe not. And but what will you do to make sure that the drive, shared driveway and shared spaces? Safety and.
Looks like you're breaking up a little bit.
Pepperidge Farm did a great. Maintain that as well as beautify that.
Looks like we're losing you. Oh. And dropped. See if he comes back in, if not.
I I got disconnected, I don't know if you heard.
Yeah, you started breaking up a little bit.
Sinage?
No, we did not hear about your comments on signage.
Did you hear my comments about safe walkways, passages and so forth?
A little bit, yeah, about people parking in the back and navigating to the front for the office.
Yeah, so the the office people park in the back, and then they make their way through the building from the back. So if it's going to be storage in the back and then parking in their office space in the front, how will the people make their way to the front? How is that going to be planned out? And in terms of the walkways and the passages, so if you're going to have people walking. And then you have all of the people of the apartment complex of all different ages, you have, you know, young, old, dogs and so forth. How are we going to make sure that that shared space, you know, continues to be safe for all? And then finally, I was saying, and how, what types of improvements, Pepperidge Farm did a great job of landscaping and maintenance and. On top, and in terms of signage, I think my internet is unstable for some reason. In terms of signage, you know, hopefully it would be minimal in terms of the as it is with Pepperidge Farm. And I think those are all my points to consider as you move forward.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak, just raise your hand. I'm not seeing anybody else, Ms. Wells.
Thank you. Attorney Blank, you want to?
Yeah. Sure, thank you, so. One, I'll just sort of point out the obvious, which is you 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 sort of can't please all the people all the time, right? So Ms. Lauricella said this should definitely be a more intense use than we're proposing. And then the the next two speakers said, this is probably too intense, and or they prefer, they want it to be as as. Passive a use as humanly possible for the benefit of the apartments next door. So that that is definitely something that I know ownership had a lot of discussions about uses that would be compatible with the apartments next door, and that would be. Unlikely to aggravate them or make them unhappy neighbor. When self-storage is about as passive a use as you could have, and one that would be. Almost impossible to really be offensive to a neighbor, they definitely looked at other uses. And continue to look at other uses, and in the event that another opportunity comes, they they're not just like a self-storage operator, they'll 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 work with. Anybody to fit up the space, and they've they've made efforts to try to locate other end users for the space, but right now. Self-storage is is where they're at. The with with respect to solar panels, right now, solar panels are not proposed for the building, however. As part of the fit up work, the electrical will be. Upgraded and and set to accommodate solar. So in the event that the roof needs to be replaced, or there's a big capital project up up top. Then they'll look at the feasibility of of putting in solar at that time, and they have, I know I said this to you previously, they have done solar on other. Storage buildings, so they're, you know, if they can make it work down the road, then that is something that they'll they'll do, but it's not contemplated for for right now. Present day. The. The the traffic, you have the traffic, one of the concerns from Ms., I think it's Stacy Moketoff. Was about that there would be lots of traffic and that. was about that there would be lots of traffic and that office space. We've, I will say that the Pepperidge Farm use, which does that innovation center with that product tasting and and coming up with new products. I I believe and we had that it was classified as office space historically, at least for that front portion of the property, which is what we've we've offered now that we're not changing at the time. In the event that there's a a different use that's gonna come in there, that'll come back to you, or at least a permit will be applied for for any any alternate use for the front space. The the traffic is definitely gonna decrease as a result of these changes. It's not an increase. I mean, it's gonna increase from it being an empty building, but it's gonna decrease from the last use. The there, let me just share my screen again. The last speaker had some concerns about access and parking. And so the the office space remains here. Again, they they may have to come in with the permit application for for any kind of a use. But they, there, there is in fact parking in the front of the building that's not being changed here, that easily serves the office use. If if their parking demand is greater than the parking that's here, and it, you know, and we 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 work something out with that user, there there obviously is ample parking in the back of the site. There is sidewalks with crosswalks, see as you can see here, that continue through the length of the site. These are all existing that will remain back to the, this is where the parking area begins back here. And again, this is not a high-traffic area for the the self-storage. You're gonna have a couple of vehicles an hour coming in and out for it. So so there is, there is access to the back. Obviously, it's not super convenient all the way back here. And hopefully, what whatever gets worked out for the 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 end user at the front, the parking can remain upfront for that user. But for today's purposes, we're not, we're not asking for any changes with respect to the front of the building. It's simply for the the self-storage use. Again, it is an allowed use in this zone. It does meet those special permit criteria. And I I I appreciate Ms. Loricella's comments about adding industrial to Norwalk. And I think if you wanted to change the regs in the future, okay. But but for this site, particularly because it's a condominium with a with a shared apartment neighbor, and we already have rules that that govern uses between those two properties. This is a a good use for this particular site at this time. So again, it complies with your regs. Hope that you'll approve. I think I've answered the questions. If you have more from me or the team, or Chris, you have anything you feel that needs to be added. Otherwise, we'll 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 leave it.
Yeah, I have any questions? Or attorney blank at this point? Uh, yes, Steve?
Nothing for attorney blank. I just wanted to comment that city staff was working with a potential applicant prior to the this these individuals taking possession to try to get a manufacturing spot in there, but that that fell through.
See, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, we'll close the public hearing. And we will, I'll ask for a resolution. I mean, that's we'll move, we'll move forward with the is your motion, Darius?
But I also believe that Lou might have raised his end.
I did, but I was muted. I'll I'll make the motion or Darius can make the motion. I'll second.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have a resolution?
There's a couple tweaks highlighted, a date change that was revised. And then just clarifying on five that there's no proposed change in lighting, but if there was, it should comply with our standards in place currently. So that just was a was a tweak.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Have there any comments? Okay, I think we're ready to for a vote. If you could do a roll call, Michelle?
Yes. I'll start with J J Byron.
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Deanna Davis?
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. We will move on now to our last matter. Twenty twenty-five dash oh eight R Planning and zoning commission zoning regulation text amendment, and I won't read the entire paragraph. Who's gonna be or Brian, are you bringing it? Introduce it?
Brian will probably walk you through a bunch of it and I'll jump in. I just wanted to say, because initially there was an application for nineteen Newtown Turnpike. That was a public hearing that we failed to publish the legal notice in time. So that got moved to the your June meeting. So I just wanted to let anybody know from the public, we apologize, and that will be on the June fourth meeting.
All right, I will share my screen and everybody through this. All right, so we're proposing essentially a bunch of text amendments to various sections of the zoning regs. Most of these were due to, again, as applications coming in, running into some issues, and then staff noting some things that where there were conflicts or just really mostly related to to clean up, in our opinion, on on the regs. So as we were from the original proposal that we had submitted to you, number one here, we're we're asking you to actually not look at this at this time and not include it as part of any potential action. This is gonna be included as a separate text amendment that we will discuss hopefully later tonight. So I'll skip past this. This is mostly related to flood zone and unfinished areas and things like that. So we'll skip. So then the next one, this is an amendment to also the flood zone section. But what this is essentially saying is that if you have an existing structure that is located within fifteen feet of the coastal jurisdiction line, that you are going to be limited on how you can expand that structure. So or or essentially what structures can be put within fifteen feet of the coastal jurisdiction line. So A is saying that if you have an existing structure, you can raise a portion of it to make it flood compliant. You can do interior innovations to the portions of the building within that area. You can put in pools, docks, public access requirements, should they be required by some other regulation, exempting civic districts from this requirement and water-dependent uses. Number three is to essentially add in maximum ceiling heights to structures that are within the LI light industrial and HI heavy industrial zones. Right now, the height pretty much says that the ground floor can be a twenty-foot minimum, and then it doesn't say what the maximum is or what the other floors can be. So we're proposing to put in minimum and maximum height requirements, which will overall limit the max height of these structures. Four is a change to, we we did a previous change where instead of measuring from the mean-high water line that we would start measuring from the coastal jurisdiction line. So there was just one extra reference within the marine commercial zone that still referenced mean-high water. So we're just proposing to remove that and go to coastal jurisdiction line. Five, this is specific to lots that are called watercourse lots, meaning that they have frontage along a watercourse, be it Norwalk Harbor or Five Mile River. Essentially, it says that each, both the street and the watercourse act as frontages, and that you need to have the buildings look a certain way along those frontages. And the issue was that this was applying also to like single-family homes along the water, which we don't think was the intention behind this regulation. We thought it would be more fitting towards commercial development, mostly within the mixed-use zones. So we want to limit the zones that this applies to, to the CD three, CD three W, CD four, and CD four W. We had sent a previous, or we had sent previous language that included the marine commercial zone. We're proposing not to include the marine marine commercial zone as part of this, just because some of those water-dependent uses, it might be tricky to require that they put a building close to the water and that it have a a frontage type facing the water. So we felt it'd be more applicable just to those more traditional mixed-use zones. And then what this will do is give more clarification on what that building has to look like and where it can be located, both on the street front and on the waterfront. So for this change, number six is to add in that when you do a change of use on a property that exceeds a certain size, in this case, twenty thousand square feet, that you need to at least apply for a site plan review and come back to you as the planning and zoning commission to present the application. So for example, if you had right now within the regs, a commercial use, whether, you know, just say a restaurant that was twenty thousand square feet, and then changed it to a retail use that was twenty thousand square feet. There's no requirement that they come in and present an application to you, even though that that could be a pretty substantial change in terms of traffic or anything like that. So we're putting this in as kind of a a trigger to at least come back with a site plan review application to be presented to you. Seven is related to trader vocational schools. There were pretty specific standards that we included, and I I think most of these came up from the twenty-five Van Zandt application for the trader vocational school. And then as we were looking at it, we had a couple folks reach out. One was Factory Underground, who do like an audio recording school, which would technically be classified as a trader vocational school. And then we had a beauty school actually reach out to looking to locate in within the CD four zone. So as we looked at the requirements, we we thought they're a little bit too strict on one requiring a special permit, and then two requiring a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. So we're proposing to kind of get rid of some of those limitations and allow it to be a little bit easier to open up a trader vocational school in the mixed-use zones, get rid of the minimum lot size, and then more sync up the trader vocational school use with the Connecticut general statutes and how it's defined within the statutes. Eight is a modification. It's kind of a three-part modification. It's to remove two uses which are listed here, indoor and outdoor storage of passenger motor vehicles and motor vehicle storage, and then to modify the warehouse use table and include a warehousing accessory use within the accessory use table. Part of the reason for this was staff doesn't feel that the outdoor storage of motor vehicles is a particularly great use of a property. However, there are instances where folks would store passenger vehicles within a structure, in which case we think that it more closely aligns to a warehouse use. So what we would do is modify the warehouse use to state that you can store motor vehicles within the warehouse, and it would still fall under a warehouse use. It would also include triggers for requiring a site plan review if it exceeds a certain square footage. And then warehousing as an accessory use, there are uses that could potentially or would potentially need to have some sort of warehousing component to function. So as part of that, we would say, okay, warehousing is an accessory use to these uses listed here. I know it's a bit redundant to say that warehousing can be accessory to a warehouse. I was kind of just being belts and suspenders on that. But then also listing in permitting requirements, what kind of application would be needed? So in this case, a site plan review if it abuts a residential zone.
Brian, I have a question about this one.
Sure.
If you're removing motor vehicle storage and and the other passenger vehicle storage from this, how do we, what would be, what would we be citing people for if they were doing that? Because we have a lot of people that are doing that.
So essentially, if I, if somebody's doing a a use of a property that's not listed within the zoning regulations, it's if a use is not listed as being permitted, then it's prohibited. So it would be a via, it would continue to be a violation of of the the use table.
Okay.
And are you, are you asking that, like, just because I think it's distinguishing from like a parking lot? So if it's just, like, if you had a vacant piece of property and somebody just started storing cars there, that that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, I'm I guess I'm thinking there's there's another one later on that I thought might be related to this. But I was thinking, I I know that technically, like, if a use isn't listed, it's prohibited. But I think in some circumstances, we've sort of intentionally put the use in so that it could say, so that it would have a definition, and then say NP, 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 and maybe there's someplace where it's permitted, but then it's very clear what the definition of it, like vape shops, right? It didn't exist previously. It wasn't expressly prohibited in any particular place. So I'm, I I always worry about sort of taking out entirely something, especially that's been problematic at times for the city, unless it's because we're intending to cover that with some different use. Do you know what I mean?
I think so.
If it's not a problem, it's not a problem. I just want to make sure that we still have all the tools, you know, because we cite a lot of folks for having storage of vehicles that's non-permitted. I want to make sure that won't be a problem.
I don't, I don't think so. I think the the where this is kind of like, might be an extreme example, would be if someone, like, there was a car dealership and they found some other lot, and all of a sudden they wanted to just start storing cars on that lot. Well, we would say, sorry, that's, you know, that's not part of your dealership. You're not allowed to do that.
Okay.
Next is related to workforce housing. Let Steve go through this one with you guys.
Sure. So there were a couple provisions that came out of the affordable housing study that's on your adoption schedule for next month. So we started kind of hitting some of the low-hanging fruit with that. One thing that the consultant identified kind of through their data analysis was that there's a cohort that is above eighty percent of the state median income and but between ninety percent state median income, that that still is kind of housing challenge. So they don't meet our workforce meet our workforce standard. They don't factor into how the state looks at the the eight thirty G applications. But but there's a need there. So we thought maybe this was like kind of a, some low hanging fruit that we could tick off that you know, hits that eighty to ninety percent state median income. So basically, it also allows for, say, you're, you're, you get you, you're at that seventy-eight percent of state median income and then you get like a great promotion. And you're up to like, say eighty-five percent state median income. You don't have to leave that that workforce unit. You're, you're still allowed to stay in that. And the other aspect would be that you're, we're looking at putting in potentially like a little bit of a bump or a bonus if someone adds in extra units above that ten percent requirement, but they keep them, you know, deep restricted at the eighty, ninety percent range. You know, there, there's a, I don't even know if we'd say it's a negative to this, but it's something to keep in mind that you're technically adding units that won't count towards the the state's eight thirty G total. But there's still de- de-restricting perpetuity at between that eighty and ninety percent. You know, so we're a little over fourteen percent right now. So it's not like we'd be in danger of of getting close to ten percent with this, but we did put a safeguard, which is number E or letter E, I should say. If the city at any point, the city gets down to twelve percent of its housing total at you know, the the eight thirty G mark, then you know, we would no longer allow those units at the eighty, ninety percent. So it's, it's basically a, a, a little bit of a bonus provision to allow and encourage some additional units that, you know, A, they're not hitting every affordability level, but they're hitting another level that's not currently identified in the regulations.
Questions about this one? So we're saying the annual income is between eighty and ninety. So with the others, with with the regular workforce units, it's just that there's a maximum income of eighty. We don't really say the, the minimum.
They can't exceed eighty.
It can't exceed eighty. Yeah. So for these, we're saying that for these extra units, there is a minimum of eighty and a maximum of ninety. Okay. And then could we do something like where if the city's total drops below twelve percent, they can still get the density bonus by adding extra units between seventy and eighty? Or sixty and seventy or something like, I feel like we are, we're using density bonus to capture a slightly higher income bracket that's still in need of affordable housing and that like came out in the affordable housing study. But we're not going to do it if our workforce percentage starts to drop too low. And so maybe this is a way to help get it back up or expand it to a slightly lower income tier and allow the developers to still have that density bonus.
I hadn't thought about it from that perspective. We, we haven't really dug into the fine details yet, but we were thinking about looking at another bonus provision for hitting at a lower threshold, so probably something below sixty. But we hadn't really put it in into text yet.
Okay, I think I'm, I'm very interested in hearing like how that one comes out. I wonder if for, and maybe this is all such small numbers, it doesn't matter, but for a developer planning a project, like not knowing, you know, is the city's total percentage going to drop below twelve percent a year or two from now? And then I can't have the extra five percent units that I was planning on, like whether that uncertainty could be problematic at all.
You know, I don't know. Yeah, I, I, I think that if that scenario kind of played out, it would, I think it would take a long time. Just, just my guess.
Okay. And then item E, I'm not sure. So you're saying the housing is for families that pay thirty percent towards rent or less of income. But then you're saying less than or equal to eighty percent SMI. I thought we're talking about ninety percent now.
Frank, can you blow that up just one?
And I apologize that the letters might be a little off because Chapin had caught that the there's a break in here somewhere that created E out of which should have just been a I fixed it here. So I think what Anna's is right here.
Oh, wait, this is different than what?
Yeah, there was a break. Yeah, there was a break in here. It was just that, that the sentence should have just continued instead of having so the text is still the same. It's just fixed.
Okay, so this is a continuation. D is talking about the normal below eighty percent. D isn't referencing these new below ninety percent at all. Right, D is referring to the eight thirty G percentages, which are eighty percent, has nothing to do with the fact that here we're talking about expanding up to ninety percent.
I think so. Yeah, I'm trying to read it itself.
Okay. And is E duplicative? With, with D or in what way are, are D and E talking about different things?
It looks like it's duplicative now that I'm reading it, but I'm trying to think that there was a reason why they included both.
Is it that E is talking about the statute requirements where D is about things that might actually feed into that statute requirements currently?
My preference at the moment would be to leave it in, but I would, I probably want to read it more to give a firm answer as to why it worded it that specific way. I don't think it hurts.
I just want to make sure that it wasn't, I just want to make sure that it wasn't intending to capture something different than D. Which I'm either not understanding or isn't written clearly. So it looks like it's hitting the same notes.
I, yeah, that's the way I'm reading it now. I would agree.
I was leaving it for now, but if you could sort of like double check it or?
Yeah, right. Yeah, if you decide to move in favor of this, you can make them, you know, part of the yeah, paid part of the motion to, you know, delete that if not necessary. So I think that would handle it.
Sure.
Okay, I'll read that again.
Good achievement.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you, Anna, for, for running through all those. You read my mind on, on a number of them. To maybe build off one of the, one of the questions you had about the eighty to ninety percent range. Is, is there, I, I feel like I'm not seeing a reason for specifying a, a minimum on the units and specifying the minimum of eighty percent. Should we just set it as a maximum of ninety percent?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say before.
Instead of between eighty per, eighty to ninety percent, it would say less than ninety percent.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I think you can do that, too. That's fine.
Because if for some reason, some wonderful developer, you know, their five percent density bonus is five apartments. And they aren't getting in any applicants between eighty and ninety percent. And they want to wrench to somebody who's at seventy-eight percent or sixty-nine percent. I would want to support them in doing that.
There, I'll just flag that.
Yeah, if you could just highlight E too, Brian, if you don't mind, just so I go back and look at that.
Ten was just more specificity on what type of mailings need to go out for mailed notice.
What does the word firm mean in this context again? I know you guys described this last time and I just don't remember the specific.
That is, that's how the postal service defines it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Because right now that they have certified mail and certificate of mailing. So the way that the regulation reading had to do both, which was kind of technically a little, you know, unnecessary. And the key thing is making sure that someone has the proper list of individuals they need to notify and that, that they verified that they mailed it on a given date. So we can make sure it complies with statute.
Thanks.
Eleven, we're also proposing not to include as part of this package and it would be part of the text amendment that we'll talk about later.
Yes, eleven would not be part of the action tonight.
Twelve, because of those changes to indoor and outdoor storage of motor vehicles is amending the definition of a motor vehicle body shop to include that they'd be allowed as an accessory to the business, essentially have some sort of storage of motor vehicles on the property. The other motor vehicle uses that we have also include language saying that, you know, storage of motor vehicles would be a customarily accessory to those, those uses. So this would cap how long they could be there while they're being worked on. I think that was it or the changes. And then happy to open it up to the public, Ms. Wells. Stop sharing. You're muted, Galen.
So Brian, before we do that, could we just go back to to and the one under it where we're talking about existing residences being raised to comply in the flood zone, provided there's no increase in massing?
Yes.
So Tammy brought this up at the last meeting. And what this would indicate is that you could have a single family residence in a flood zone. You could raise it to be from a compliant, but you couldn't put a second story on it. Whereby there's a building next door that's torn down. That could be raised with two stories on it easily under our existing zoning code. So I don't understand why it's logical that someone with an existing property should be penalized more than a person coming in to build a new property or tearing down a property to put up a new building.
So for these ones, so this isn't applicable to every structure in the flood zone. It is specific to structures that are within the, the VE zone and I believe coastal AE and VE zones and I, I believe it's water word of I, I, it's, it's not applicable to every single structure that's
So they're truly coastal. Okay. But even so, I, you know, my, my same logic applies. If I can build a building on the coast, that's two stories above a raised floor. Why can't I raise an existing building to be two stories above a raised floor?
Yeah, I, I'll say staff was pretty, we had a pretty rigorous conversation with about six of us about this and we were pretty split on it. And so we kind of said, all right. At the end of the day, instead of arguing, we said, let, let, we'll let the commission decide which direction they want to go on this.
Is what Diana's saying accurate that, not that I doubt you, I just want to double check that there could be a property in this type of flood place where you could build new up higher than if you were to lift an existing house?
Not, not for this. So this regulation is essentially creating a fifteen foot setback from the coastal jurisdiction line. So what that, what, what this regulation is saying is that if you happen to have an existing structure that's within fifteen feet of the coastal jurisdiction line, only that portion of the structure cannot be increased in massing. The rest of the structure that's outside of that fifteen feet from the coastal jurisdiction line could be raised and, and have massing added to it.
And if you had that property that had some structure in the fifteen feet zone, could you tear it down and build higher in those fifteen feet than if you were to just raise the existing?
No, so this would not let you put a structure back there.
But on the other hand, there are properties that exist within that prop, wi- within that fifty, fifteen feet. And where you couldn't build in them, if you have a property within it, the mass is still the same. If you could build a next door, five feet back, you could build a, a, a building that has two stories above the raised portion. Whereas in that, you could not. So it doesn't really seem logical. There are homes that are within the fifteen feet of the inward.
Isn't the difference that the other property is not within the fifteen feet, that it's about something related to at, I'm, I'm not arguing for it. I'm trying to understand it. Because the way you first phrased it, Diana, it sounded ridiculous, like not what you were saying, what they're proposing. And like, isn't that the difference, the fifteen feet? Or is that a meaningful difference, really?
This is, this is creating it's almost like a new setback where, so if you're starting from scratch on a lot that's in the flood zone, you cannot put a structure within fifteen feet of the coastal jurisdiction line. But there are existing structures that are within fifteen feet of the coastal jurisdiction line. So this would allow those structures to raise that portion of the structure to be flood compliant, but it would not allow them to make it any taller. And that's where Steve had mentioned that when discussing it as staff that we are pretty split. DEP also said that they were in favor of the no mat, no increase in massing, but then, you know, practically speaking, if you're allowed to do two stories or two and a half stories, it seems reasonable that you would also allow that portion to be two and a half. So it's almost like just a philosophical question on
Just, just to
It's a very small piece that you're, you're talking about. And, and right now it's, it's, it's twenty-five feet. So we're pushing it back to fifteen. We're making even more difficult.
No, loosening it up.
Yeah, this would be a loose thing from twenty-five. So right now it's a, it's a twenty-five foot measurement from the mean high tide reaching the mean high tide, which is roughly equivalent to the coastal jurisdiction line. This would be lowering the twenty-five foot setback down to a fifteen foot setback. So it, it would it lessens the, the amount of space on the property that it takes up.
So instead of having to take it back twenty-five feet, you'd only have to take it back fifteen feet.
Right.
If you were within the fifteen feet. So it would be a portion of the, of the house.
Right, a smaller portion than what exists now. Yeah.
For an existing house, it doesn't seem that it's a lot of square footage and it's, it creates kind of an architectural dilemma. That's my only comment on it. Doesn't seem terribly logical.
That's why we're having you guys be the deciding factor.
But would you say, Brian, were the pros and cons amongst staff, is it the same issue that Diana's bringing up or was it something else?
Yeah, so I think the, to allow for an increase in massing seems to be more of like a practical and architectural measure that you're allowed to do two and a half stories. If you had a structure that was within your front yard setback, that was non-conforming and it wasn't granted a variance, it's just, it just is vested by being there for so long. You could go and add a second story over that, no problem. So this is just a little bit different because it's more related to, you know, being in a flood zone and being, uh, and having any sort of coastal impacts. Um, so deep and the staff that were in favor of no increase in massing is because their opinion is that um, it would not be consistent with the coastal management act to allow for an increase in massing for, for that portion of the structure.
So Brian, could you technically raise your house that was within 15 feet of, of the, the coastal jurisdiction line? And on that same, uh, line and then put in addition on top of the part that's back from the line?
Under this?
You could.
Mm-hmm. So it's just that 15, whether, whatever portion of the structures within the 15 feet could only be raised to be flood compliant, but the rest of the structure could be raised to be flood compliant and have uh, massing added to it. So it could be increased in height.
Architecturally speaking, it would be a challenge. I hope there aren't many people in that situation.
Oh, there are a lot of houses with, uh, you know, two stories on one portion of the house and one story on the other.
Any other questions or do you want to open it up to the public, Ms. Wells?
And me?
Any other questions or would you like to go to the public comment?
Yeah, if there are no questions, let's go to the public comment.
Sure. So
We're done with the questions, right? So we'll ask the public to participate. Uh, if they'd like to, they raise their hand. Brian will bring them over to speak. You can only speak once. So say everything you want to say. But be as concise as possible. Give us your name and address when you begin to speak. And so I guess you're set, Brian.
Right. So first bring over a Diane Loricella.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Staff. For the record, my name is Diane Loricella, 21 Little Fox Lane. Um, I, since I was on the Zoom, I decided to stay on board to listen to the interesting discussion about the amendments. I first wanted to say I appreciate the continued modifications presented by this commission, uh, by staff and this commission, uh, as, uh, we find out the real world usages and, and needs for change of our regulations. I wanted just to focus, there were a lot of good discussion. Uh, of course I care a lot about coastal safety and flooding and affordability. I'm hoping one day we have an amendment that states that in Norwalk, there must be 15 or 20% affordable units. Um, we could do that, but the main reason I'm here tonight is, I think it wasn't your number seven having to do with vocational school regulations. I very much can't tell you how much I am in favor of the reduction of some of the limitations that had been put in place. You named, I know of two of the three types of vocational, um, entities. I am, uh, know the 25 Van Zant of, uh, and of course Factory Underground. And, uh, what we are finding now, uh, finally, society is talking about the fact that no, you do not have to go to college in order to put together even a six-figure salary for continuing your family and your neighborhood. Vocational schools are very important. Uh, I know that, uh, there's a huge, the other day I was trying to get a plumber to help with a problem at the house I am staying at. And it was very difficult and the plumber finally told me that he could not find someone to assist him because the vocational schools just aren't cranking them out. So I do believe, again, as I spoke before, jobs and job creation and the schools that assist with job creation could really help put Norwalk on the map for that particular effort in our society. Again, with the P O C D, we want to have vocational schools and make sure people can afford to live here, which is quite a challenge for many of us. Vocational school, uh, regulation changes that make it more realistic and not so onerous is the way to go. So I very much appreciate this particular one. I think it is number seven and have a good evening. Thank you.
Um, if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool, uh, to the bottom of your screen. Click that once. Seeing none, Ms. Wells.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, good. Thank you. Is there a second? Anna seconds? Okay.
I'll pull that up.
We're approving. So we've just got over that text. So I think we just need to do a roll call.
Well, let's, let's take a look at that language, um, that Anna Chiepin had, uh, discussed for the affordability.
For my motion, do I need to specifically say that, uh, including tabling those two items that were flagged by staff? Is that something that?
Uh, no, I have it in here. Uh, so that's good.
Thank you.
Understand why we're jumping two to two or two to four for the
Free.
Fix that in post, I guess. Check what item number this was. And then any language to how, how, how would you like to go about making amendments here?
The annual income for the families and the additional units is no more than 90% of the state medium income.
Yep, like that.
It's put does not exceed, Brian, because that's
Does not exceed, whatever. Yeah.
That's, that's typically how we phrase it.
Yeah.
See, listening here. I think, Danny, we were leaving as is for now.
Yeah.
If you could have, if you don't mind, if you want to include in the motion that staff look at E and then determine if it's necessary to keep it or it can be deleted.
Uh, yeah, that's so amended. And that will keep you from needing to re-notice such a change, right? You'll be able to just take care of that immediately if it's okay, great.
Yeah.
And then did we want to discuss the massing one?
Well, maybe Brian, you can make it clear that the portion of the existing residence that lies in front of the coastal jurisdiction line is the only part you're talking about because it isn't clear from, from this that, that that's what you're talking about. It just seems that the entire existing residence cannot have increased mass.
So would that be appending to the end of A?
Yeah, I think so.
To say, like, provided that there is no increase in massing to portions that extend, uh,
Yeah, I think you could put it after provided that, Brian, provided that the portion Hmm. By any portion in advance of the CJL cannot increase massing.
I think that's good, Steve.
Make it better after. There is no increase in massing to the
For any portion, yeah.
And I like any instead of the, uh, that was a good call out, Steve, like any portion of the residents within. Uh, yeah, just before the word portion, changing the to any. Diana, is that what you were looking for?
I think that's much better. Thank you.
Try this one time. Got it. That's fix it later. Did say that item, okay. That was item two. Hey, and that's everything.
Hey, are we ready now, do you think?
I'll, uh, move as amended, um, uh, yep. I think that was needed since we made some changes there.
Second.
Okay, good. So we should be ready now for the roll call.
Um, start with Ms. Jordan Byron.
Hi, I'm here. Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it? Is that it? Yes.
Yes, it is.
Great. You, Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Basnick? Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right, that is approved. Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to the discussion. Uh, 25, 2025 dash 35 R planning and zoning commission, zoning regulation text amendments to Article four, six and nine. And we'll lead this discussion.
Brian and I'll go back, we'll, we'll tag team.
I got the right document that I'm sharing. Okay. Um, so kind of similar to the last one, these are a lot of more technical changes that we're proposing, um. So we wanted to kind of give you guys some background on what we're proposing and, and why. Um, so the, the, the first change, uh, is uh, one is specific to the CD three C, but it also will apply to the other mixed use zones relatively similarly. Um, is that there's a max, uh, floor, uh, ceiling height for specific uses within, um, the mixed use zones. So there's a, a, a minimum of 15 feet and a maximum of 25 feet. So the first change is to add in restaurant to those uses that are listed. Um, right now it's not currently listed. So technically they're kind of like in this, uh, no man's land um, for what their ceiling height can be. And then the second part is adding in, um, various uses that sort of are outside that 25 foot cap on how tall the first floor has to be. So those are listed here auditoriums, community centers or places of assembly, commercial recreation establishments, museums, performing arts theaters and places of worship. Um, all of those uses can generally have a first floor that's taller than 25 feet. So we wanted to provide them some relief, um, in that sense.
Sense?
Uh, Brian, I'm sorry, can you go back?
Sure.
Um, what, why do you limit it to, um, uh, commercial, um, um, you got to go back, um, yeah, I think that's it. Commercial recreation establishment.
So so in the three C, um, you can have a commercial recreation establishment, but you can't in the, the CD four, if that's what you're
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so just personalize in terms of, um, what uses are allowed in each, in each zone. Um, three is to add in, um, a new principal use for open space and then having it essentially be not regulated in all of the zones. Um, so some of this comes up when, um, you know, they had the, the land, um, conservancy who, who may own, uh, uh, an open space area and they want to provide, you know, some sort of parking lot so that people can park there and then access the open space. Um, that would be something that we're not really sure would be permitted under the regs. We're kind of trying to give, um, kind of those open space folks some ability to, um, utilize the open space for, for public purposes. Um, four is a, a lot of text to essentially just allow for townhouses to be permissible within the marine commercial zone via special permit.
Well, uh, I'm sorry, Brian, what's in the state house?
So when we redid the regs, there's essentially three different kinds of single family houses. There's a cottage, a house and a state house, and they're just differentiated based on their floor area. But they're all the same thing. They're all single family houses.
Yeah, I don't know if they needed to do all that, but that's what's there now, so.
So again, just modifying each section of the regs that needs to be modified to, to get townhouses to be permitted.
Isn't they weren't permitted in the first place?
Not in the marine commercial.
Okay.
So they're listed as NP despite like other multifamily uses being allowed. So we're well, gonna, we're proposing a lot of townhouses as well.
Okay.
Um, five is, uh, sort of a two-part change. One was as we, the, uh, TMP had requested, um, under one of our previous amendments to, um, reference the complete street design guide for street types instead of the DPW roadway, um, classification map. So, um, that's part of this change is to, um, update the street types that are specified for certain uses. Um, and then as I was going through, and it was mostly specific for like these cannabis uses that, um, previously referenced collector or arterial, arterial streets to now reference, um, commercial thoroughfare, essentially, um, Westport Ave, Connecticut Ave and Main Avenue. Um, as I was going through it, I took a look at, um, amphitheaters and auditoriums, uh, which how there, these are within the limitations for those specific uses, which how there, these are within the limitations for those specific uses which reference um out of date street terminology. But also, as I was reading it, it seemed to me that it, under these limitations, you would not be able to have an auditorium, community center, or other place of assembly or amphitheater almost on any property in the city. Cause at some point, a road is going to tre- traverse uh a residentially zoned area. So um, and especially like, for example, Norwalk High School puts in an auditorium. Well, technically, it's on a street that says you can't put an auditorium on it. So we're kind of trying to fix the language to allow for those uses to be um permissible. Six, this was one of the ones that we had asked you to punt under that last reg that we just did. Um, and that was because as staff, um, like our flood experts um in our office kept, kept looking at what we had originally proposed. They were um just worried that there was something that we were missing in terms of impacts for, for the changes. So we think that we've um now caught all of those. And mo- most of that's due to um new definitions for, for things like lowest floor, unfinished area, and finished habitable area. They all kind of need to like reference each other and also not conflict with one another. So that was kind of like what we were trying to balance. What this reg is essentially saying is that if you're in um a flood zone and you're raising your structure to be flood compliant, that that lowest um area of the structure where uh you would park your cars and have stairs to get up to your first finished level, that that area cannot be finished. It's supposed to be um a space that is solely for parking vehicles and access up to your, your first floor that's above the, the base flood elevation. Um, and with that, this change uh is specific to coastal high hazard zone, which is like the V E zone. Just uh more uh specific language on what that first level of the structure can be and what kind of materials that you can use. Um, I'll, I'll skip half story for now um and have Steve do that one just to keep it on with the, the flood zone related stuff. So the, the first uh definition proposed to be added is an unfinished area. So essentially, anything that's um not two feet above base flood elevation within the flood zone has to be an unfinished as defined here. Um, and then related to that, we are going to specify what a finished area is. So essentially, um, an unfinished area cannot be a finished area. And then modifying story, um, since the story definition references what, how you measure stories in the flood zone, um, that we are going to say that that unfinished area that is below your first finished floor is not a story, provided that no more than fifty percent of the floor ceiling height um is above the base flood elevation. So kind of giving them a break on stories, but not necessarily on um height. So the last change with, with that's just the uh modifying lowest floor. So lowest floor, what you just need to think about for lowest floor is lowest floor is your, the lowest finished floor. That is the floor that will be two feet above base flood elevation where you'll actually be able to finish the area.
And I'll finish up with just the reason for changing the half-story definition was we had instances popping up where someone had an attic space that they wanted to install their mechanical units in. And then they ended up, the way they were constructing it, it had like uh another level on top of that. So technically by our definitions, they ended up having like two stories, then two half-stories. So we were telling them, sorry, you have to leave it as open collar ties, which was not everybody's preferred construction method. So the, the, the buildings weren't ending up any taller than they could have been. Just they had running into like a little technical snag in how we define the half-story. So we modified it to just say, okay, we're not worrying about if they're putting that little drop ceiling in there for the mechanical units. We're just want to control what that volume is in that extra area above the second floor. And while we were doing that, we, we tried to address something with some of like the Village Creek houses that have flat roofs to give them a little bit of extra square footage on that. Um, if you think about the modern houses, they're basically rectangles. So it's a rectangle on top of a rectangle, and they can't do, under the way our definitions were structured, they can't do anything more than a two-story building. So this last bit of change at the bottom gives them a little bit of extra floor area at the top. So they're still ending up with something area-wise that's consistent with what everybody else can do in the conventional single-family zones.
And that's it. Again, very fun technical zoning language.
Yeah, and I know you guys just got this recently, so um we can, you know, happy to put it back on your next agenda if you wanted to review or ask any questions. And it's still, like every one of these other changes has to go through that public hearing process down the road.
It's perfect. Okay, so we're ready to move on to the acceptance of minutes? For the regular meeting of May seventh, twenty twenty-five? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as drafted?
I'll move if you.
Chance to read it, sorry.
Okay, so.
You know, it looked weird on your next agenda. I forgot that at the last meeting it got late, so we didn't do minutes. So I missed, and I think we had two A of the April meetings on there, so your next one will have those.
Then the comments of the director?
Yes, so two things, I know you guys had talked about setting up a meeting, a separate meeting to do an aqua for meeting. I know Alexis is working with the chair on trying to set up a time. We might piggy, piggyback um a couple of just single-family CAM applications with that to get them off the other agendas, because right now we're booked solid in starting to book into July already. So we're, we're just trying to lighten the loaf for all these meetings. So that'll come down the, the road within a, a, you know, some announcement for that. Um, we talked about everybody getting city emails. So everybody would, all correspondences with staff, um, anything related to your work on the commission would come through a city email. So the I T department has set those emails up. Um, the one issue is that these email addresses require a, a two-factor often authentication to get set up. They don't like to send out temporary passwords outside of the city network. So I think to get the email set up, we're gonna have to have you guys come in at a specific time to meet with somebody from I T to get that set up on your computer. Um, if it's okay with you guys, I'll email the I T folks and see what generally some of the times that work and then circle back with you to see if that can match up to some of your availability. And if not, then we'll come up with Plan B for folks who can't meet at those times. So I think it probably involves bringing in some kind of device, whether you use it off your phone or a laptop or something into uh me- and meet with I T to have them get that installed on your machine. And so going forward, when we send out emails, we'll send it to um, it'll be like G wells at uh norwalkct.gov. And so you'll have to unfortunately check those emails as well, but all the staff communications that go there. And just a reminder as to why we're doing that is we get um FOIA requests. So we have to like, if say somebody has an issue with something we did, they'll say, I want all emails sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission about application X. And right now, we're using your personal emails. That is problematic for us, because it's, you know, we can't search your personal emails. We have to rely on you guys to do that, and it's also a little bit invasive and problematic for you guys, because we're having you go back and search for these. Now we know what emails are coming and going from that city email, and it'll save a lot of time and headache for everybody involved in the search. So I'll send out a couple of emails with dates once I circle back with I T.
Hey, great.
So will all emails from you also be directed to that um city website now, address?
Yeah, so, so if we're gonna email you with like an agenda or something to say, hey, we need to meet, it'll go to that email address.
And sending now, you know, emails that you receive from the public that you want us to consider, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're gonna have to check that email frequently.
Yeah, and if, if we're not hearing from you, we'll send one to your other emails and hey, check your email.
Okay, then the comments of commissioners?
Well, there's uh that, the issue I brought up um about um hearing uh applications from applicants who um have uh an outstanding violation. Uh, I don't know what's involved in changing our regulations. Um, but uh I would have the staff uh indicate that we will not hear uh an application from anyone who is uh currently in violation. Let them resolve the violation before they come to us uh and then come to us. Um, so that in the, in the case we had today, we would not have heard them tonight uh because they were in violation when they uh made the request for the time extension. They needed to, they would then need to resolve the violation and then come to us. Steve, is that something that we can just direct you to do? Or is that something that needs to be uh changed in the regulation? I think we can proceed along that path. I can't say we would never get challenged on it legally, but I'd say let them cha- if, if you feel about it, let them challenge us and then we'll go from there. Well, maybe, maybe it's worth um uh hearing what the other commission members have to say. And um we can vote on that and tell you that we want that to be policy so that um you, uh you have something to fall back on in the event uh of uh legal action.
Lou, um, would you be open to a, a slight amendment of um what you've raised, which is um an, an exception for a case where someone needs to bring a application in order to cure uh their violation? Um, we've seen a couple of those where uh like tonight, uh right, we saw one where um someone had done the, the clear cutting, right? So bringing the, the application was kind of their, their only cure, right, to come in front of us with that special permit? Um, yeah, how would you?
You raise an interesting question. I would, I would agree. Uh, he could not have cured that before coming to us. Uh, I'm not, uh, I would leave it up to the staff to develop language for that, but I, I certainly agree with you.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I want to make sure that people are coming forward to us uh with um, yeah, cures. Yeah, thank you.
First one that I'd like the commission to consider is re- revisiting the A D U regulations. I, I think it's important to do everything we can to encourage A D Us in the city and requiring them to come before the convention may be too restrictive. Most A D U applications should really be able to be handled over the counter, in my opinion. That may not be the opinion of the commission. So we need to figure out whether we've changed how we feel about that or whether we have not. Also, I think we should change how the square foot requirements, seven hundred square feet is awfully small. And maybe take the square foot requirement out when it's an existing structure that's been converted into an A D U like there's this big church house or barn um instead of having to have a portion of that that can't be used as an A D U.
But somebody.
Existing structure can be used, yes?
Sorry, I, sorry for interrupting. I was just thinking of, because I know we had that individual who came in with a, he had a, an A D U in a detached older building. And we said you're capped at seven hundred. What's to, I mean, under that scenario, what's to prevent somebody from building like a fifteen hundred square foot accessory building and just saying it's for storage or I'm using it for a studio? And then two years later, come in and say, I'm gonna convert it to an A D U. Is there like some kind of time cap you want to put on that for structures in existence for X number of years or something like that?
We could consider a cap like that. It depends, you, you, my point of view is we're doing everything, we need to encourage A D Us. So I wouldn't put any timeline on it, but that may not be what the rest of the commissioners would choose.
Someone may have a barn and want to convert that into an A D U. I mean, that, that could be uh several thousand square feet. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm entirely comfortable with that.
Can we put a discussion of the A D Us on on the agenda for another meeting? Maybe with like a summary of the, uh, because we got a number of requests to change the A D U regs in the last rewrite that I think we didn't take up or that we discussed. Like there were a lot of ideas there, and then also Galen's idea.
Yeah, that was my proposal, is that we put it.
Yeah, I would definitely support putting it on the agenda, and I just want to say to what Lou brought up real quick. Um, I would support for new applications, like for, for I would not want to apply it in addition to what Chapin said to applications to extend because of like the, I wouldn't want, we've got an application already approved. And then they discover a violation. It could be, you know, a week before, a month before, or five months before. And because they don't have enough time to cure it, that entire application gets thrown out, if that makes sense. I do feel like if somebody's putting a new application to change their use or build something or whatever, and it's not in service of curing a violation, that they shouldn't have open violations when they put in the application.
I'm not, I, I mean, maybe, maybe this requires more, more time for us. Uh, but I'm not sure I agree with that. Um, I think uh when, when people purposefully uh flaunt the law, there needs to be a price they pay for it. And if the price is that you have to go through uh the application process all over again, I don't have a problem with that, because that's the sort of thing that will discourage other people from doing it.
I agree, I agree. But for the fact that so many of the violations that happen are things that people are just not aware, our violations might have come up like, like with the application, the extension deadline, I feel like there's this deadline coming up. And like, Lord knows, something comes up or somebody, there's just so much that people don't know about. You know what I mean?
I, I understand what you're saying, you know. Seems to me that they knew what they were doing. I'm, I'm not talking about the guy who did the clear cutting. That I, that ignorance I could uh understand, not try to forgive it, but I, I can understand it. Um, but uh using uh the property on West Avenue illegally um for storage um uh from, from a company that's been in business as long as they have. Uh, they, they had to know that they were doing the wrong thing. Yeah, I do think, I agree, there's two, th- those are, were two distinct issues. One, because you have to, I mean, if, if the special permit or whatever site plan application is the only way to cure the violation, then I think that there's a distinction there. But when someone violates a, a separate, has a separate violation unrelated to their application, I think that's a different scenario too. Uh, I, I want to uh agree though with what uh Galen and Anna said uh about the uh A D Us. I am, I, I'm not sure how I feel um um about the specifics. But I would also ask the staff, if we're going to have a, a separate agenda item on this, that the staff do some research, uh at least within the state, and find out what other communities are doing, especially urban communities. You know, New Haven, Bridgeport, Stanford, Danbury. Um, let's see what uh, uh. Um, let's see what uh what they're doing and what their experience is.
And also other states, Lou, you know, it may be that uh they've experimented with ADU regulations in Seattle.
Well, California did, I think, the most radical um approach to allow ADUs like pretty much anywhere. And I'm, it would be interesting to see like how much did that increase their housing affordability and availability? Were ADUs created that just extend the size essentially of the original home? Are they creating new housing units? Um, or is it a place for relatives that are visiting?
Do we have any metrics within the city of uh ADUs?
Uh, we track the number.
Okay.
Like five, right?
What's that?
Oh, I will say that.
The number five.
Since the, since the update, there's definitely been an increase in how many we permit. Um, but again, I mean, things like, yeah, requiring a site plan review is as a homeowner is a hurdle. And a seven hundred square foot number is could be considered low, so. Um, but it's definitely picked up from from previous years. I mean, I think when we first changed it, we had ADUs allowed for forty years and we only had, I don't, I can't remember if it was two hundred or three hundred, so that I mean, it's not really a significant number of ADUs.
So I haven't, I mean, I think one thing we have to figure out too is are are I, I understand their hurdles, but are they hurdles preventing somebody from doing it too? That's the other, another question. So Steve, can we put these two items on an agenda or put them? They don't have to be on the same night, but fit them in somewhere on our upcoming agendas? Yeah, it's, and it could be a good summertime project too.
Yeah, that may be something to put in with the uh with Alexis's with banners.
The uh, the other question I had uh relates to the um uh paucity of um um retail space within the uh city. And um I mean, I'd like to know what's going on. I mean, is this, I mean, we we know there are some issues with with retail, but we don't even seem to be getting neighborhood uh retail. Um, is this have to do in, to some degree with the developers who are purposely keeping those uh spaces vacant? Um, and if so, uh, should we try to do something about that? Um, or is it uh simply a part of this nationwide problem? So you'll have to excuse my ignorance, I've never heard the word paucity before, so I'm assuming that is.
With word.
English majors.
Very, 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 very small number. That's what I kinda figured.
Well, Lou, you're talking about the lack, but not the lack of space. You're talking about like un-oxygenated retail, like retail vacancies.
Exactly.
Okay.
But there's lots of retail going in interior, you know.
Well, I, I know that that, so I had recent conversations with um Spinnaker about what was going on on around Chestnut Street, cause I was, I was out there not too long ago looking around and they said they were close to filling up all their commercial space. So they were in different lease terms in different areas. So that's what they had said a few weeks ago, so hope, you know, things could have fallen through, but they were optimistic there. Um, I know Washington Street has its own set of hurdles with ownership in terms and uh rent prices asking, you know, way too much. I've heard that. I've talked to Sabrina Godeski about this a lot and we're not allowed to charge like a vacancy tax, which would be something that would have to require legislative change that could do some things um. Legislative change on whose part? The city's part or the state's part?
The legislature.
Yeah, maybe city as well, but definitely state first. Uh, and I know that I I was talking to the folks that are opening up uh the Pinnacle, the Toll Brothers site. They already have a couple spaces that are already in lease terms for stuff, but they they had a pretty good chunk of Lito. So I think it's improving slowly, but I I do, in certain areas, it's definitely problematic.
Okay, are we ready to adjourn? I'm ready to adjourn. I don't know about anybody else.
We adjourn.
I have plenty of thoughts, but I'll second.
Okay, all of you in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.